The Hammond City Council Public Hearing is now in session. Call the auditor, please.
Johnny Blunt?
Here.
Jason Hood? Bobby Martin?
Here.
Lamar Marshall?
Here.
Mike Williams?
Here. Okay. Are there any public hearings? Seeing none, we will then just go into our regular session. Call two auditor, please.
Johnny Blunt?
Here.
Bobby Martin?
Here.
Lamar Marshall?
Here.
Mike Williams?
Here.
Okay. Shall we all stand for prayer? Give us a prayer.
I invite you to join me in our heads for a moment in contemplation and turn our attention to our mighty Creator, the Author of our life, and the guide and the link to all of us. God, once again, gather here to meet as representatives of the people of the city of Hammond, and we call upon you through the praises of the Holy Spirit to guide those who have made policy for our city, give them wisdom, make the right decisions so that they follow in their works. We pray for all the good people who live in the city of Hammond, we pray for their safety, for their well-being, and that they be given a good and sacred community. We pray for this great nation of ours, and we pray for the men and women who defend our freedoms, we ask that you defend them on sacred and foreign fields, and give them a full, glowing light of this generous service to their nation. And we pray for peace in our own hearts, in our community, in our nation, within the world, and we pray for all these things in the name of the One who says, as Jesus Christ said, "The end."
Amen. Councilor Marshall?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Are there any council reports? Seeing none, we will go into Management Assessment Group report to the council. Please give us your names, members.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Carolyn Long, and I'm Vice President of Management Advisory Group. It's my pleasure to be here to give you an overview on the work that I've been doing for the city and with the Human Resources Department over the last few months. We have done a classification and compensation review and are making recommendations for the city's consideration. We did an analysis of every job in the city, and our role was to evaluate and to classify the work. We surveyed the labor market to determine what the salaries and wages were being paid for comparable positions to the cities. We provided recommendations for salary ranges as well as for actual salaries, and we're providing, we have provided recommendations for implementation. We were tasked with making recommendations to the city that would be internally equitable, fair, and externally competitive. We conducted meetings to discuss the compensation study, the background, and the study objectives with members of the administration and city staff. We held interviews with your department heads, and we developed and distributed Job Analysis Questionnaire for employees to participate. We looked at job analysis, that's looking at what are considered the compensable factors in the job, the responsibility, the scope, the budget, the number of people supervised, if it's supervision, the difficulty of the physical work, if it's a physical position, the education required, the experience required. These are the compensable factors that were considered and that go into making recommendations as to where jobs should be rated within a hierarchy. We developed salary survey instruments that we gave to peers and competitors in your market area. We conducted an analysis of the compensation data that we got back to compare that to the city positions. In your report that you have from us, there is a list of the cities that we surveyed and also a list of the jobs that were, that the ones that we called benchmarks that we looked at in the external market. I'm not going to go over those because I just, you don't want me to read along this to you. We prepared a draft report, and I call it an internal review, sometimes I call it, it's referred to as a technical review. We want to make sure, sure that there's no technical errors in it because we're dealing with people's actual compensation, we want to make sure that everything that we have in there is as correct as it can be, but we do all of that. We prepared reports for you, proposed salary schedules for your consideration. These reports, these proposed salary schedules for the civil service plan must comply with your state laws and also have to comply with court rulings that are applicable to the civil service position. As an aside, I will tell you that of all of the cities, local government entities, cities and counties that I deal with, your compensation schedule for civil service is the most complex. So it is a very complicated schedule, and hopefully we have made it as straightforward and as simple as it can be made, given the compliance requirements. We have prepared a final report. Here are the problems that you have with your current compensation plans. You have step plans for both civil service and what we call non-civil service or unified schedule employees. Some employees are between steps because of variable decisions that have been made, people are not in a step even though you have a step plan. The, for the civil service positions, there is a very confusing array of extended ranges. Various people are under different range extensions for various different reasons. The placement of employees within the plan is no longer entirely internally equitable. There is no true north that guides the placement of every individual within that plan. Having said that, let me tell you that you cannot go back and ever, unless it's for disciplinary reasons, take money away from somebody who's been given that money. And we don't know why they were or why they where they are, we have to assume it was for good and valid reasons at the time the decision was made. What we're doing, though, is saying, if this is adopted henceforth and hereafter, this is the plan we will follow, and this is how people will be placed in the plan, and basically it's a step plan, so we're looking at seniority or years of service. Very simple and straightforward. Eventually, those little anomalies will even out or level out. And we have employees whose current salaries exceed the maximum of the current range, and we are recommending a new schedule, in some cases with different maximums, but we are also recommending that when an employee reaches the maximum of the range, unless there is an entire range adjustment or structure adjustment, that employee's salary stops there. We, if, if the market says that you pay from, from A to B, A to B is where we pay. We don't just keep adding C, D, E, F, and G. The proposed civil service plan retains the current range width, including bracketing the extended ranges. It's designed to have an identical entry-level step with the unified or non-civil service plan. The civil service plan has a wider range and higher top end. This is to accommodate the differences in the mandated structure for civil service. That is a 76.4% range width. It places all employees in a single range plan and eliminates the eight different extended ranges. You may not be aware, but it is a juggling act because you have a number of employees that are on this extended plan and other employees that are on that extended plan and so on and so forth. And in the civil service plan, there's 2% between steps from zero to 21, and 1% between steps between 22 and 30. And in addition to that, it accommodates the supplement, which is, you have some court mandated machinations that have to go on within your, within your structure. For the proposed unified plan, it retains the 64% range width and uses the current starting salary for each of the new ranges. There are 31 steps in the proposed pay plan, with zero and ending, starting with step zero and ending with step 30. There's 2% up to step 21 and 1% between step 22 and step 30. So what we're looking at is substantial parity between the unified plan and the civil service plan, understanding that there is mandated structure in your civil service plan that will extend that plan, so you cannot have the same plan for the two groups of employees. It just, you've got mandates in the civil service plan that preclude that. And the range width between the civil service plan is less than that, I mean, of the unified plan, is less than the civil service plan because of the mandated calculations for state supplements. With respect to the market finding, for the civil service plan, the city lagged about 18 and 1/2 percent behind at the range minimum, about 12% behind at the midpoint, and about 8.3% behind at the maximum of the range. In the unified plan, you're in a little bit better shape, you're about 6 and 1/2% behind at the minimum, 5% behind at the midpoint, and 4.17% behind at the range maximum. The goal was not to make you look exactly like your competitors because you're not your competitors, and you're not required to have the same structure they have. The goal was to make you more reasonable and more competitive overall in the marketplace with the new recommended structure. The implementation costs involved in migrating from the structures that you have now to the proposed salary schedules. For the civil service plan, there would be an increased minimum for some of the jobs, which would be about a $38,700 adjustment for employees, some employees to the minimum of the range. Because we used a strict length of service adjustment, there would be $119,400 and change in-range adjustment for service steps, and then you have to adjust people to the closest higher step, which eliminates anybody being between steps and creating sort of multiple schedules within the schedule. And then the total cost adjustment, and this is not, now, this is based on a database that's a couple of months old, so these numbers could change a little bit here and there, but about $220,000. That's approximately 3.57% of the base salary included in our database when we ran this report. The unified plan, the adjustment to minimum was about $6,600. The internal length of service adjustment, a little less than $75,000, these are all annualized figures, by the way. Adjustment to step about $31,600, and the total adjustment, $112,810 for, on an annualized basis for the unified, that's not civil service. That's about 2.75% of the base salary in our database. Just to summarize, the recommendations we're making to you would have these results. It would end internal salary placement questions for fire employees, and this has plagued the city for some time. It would bring about internal salary equity for non-civil service employees. And I will state again that in no case has any recommendation been made, nor would it be made by us, to reduce any existing salaries. We're overlaying the recommendations here to move forward so that current employees have internal equity, and going forward, those adjustments would take place. If you have people whose salaries are higher than the target salary that would be recommended, they're not touched or said, you know, congratulations, you're getting more than the target salary, so, and we're not recommending anybody lose any pay. This would level the playing field and allow the city to focus on the future of classification and compensation in the city, and hopefully move beyond the inequities. It would greatly simplify the salary plan for internal administration. I mentioned you've got multiple extended schedules that individuals are on, so there's a lot of balancing and juggling to make sure that works right. It would freeze, under our recommendations, any salary that exceeded the maximum of the new proposed range would be frozen, so when somebody reaches the top of the range, they're topped out until that structure adjusts because of market changes or other changes that are approved by the council. It would eliminate any practice of overpaying for a position under, as you move forward into the future, and it would simplify greatly future adjustments to the structure. Thank you very much. I look forward to any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from the council?
Just for the record, how is what it costs to flip the thing a little bit too fast for, to totally adjust the non-civil service?
112, 810.
I do have one question, Mr. Vice President.
Okay.
Carolyn, I appreciate you being here. You made a comment in earlier discussions that, that about 80% of the funds are going to people at the bottom of the, of the scale, so this is to really bring that true equity into the, into the grid. Can you explain that?
Well, the bulk of the money is going to go to people that are at the lower echelons in the organization. These are the people who are further behind, and these are the people who are below the minimum of the range. For the most part, some of the upper-level positions are not going to be impacted as much, but your higher, your hierarchy in the city is not going, the higher level positions. But the bulk of the money is going to go to the people in the lower levels. Of course, obviously, 2/3 of the money roughly is going to go to civil service adjustments, and the majority of that is going to your rank-and-file sworn positions.
Ms. Long, may I clarify something? This adjustment to minimum is based on the recommended plan that you presented to the city.
Right, no one is currently below the current.
Right.
So is your understanding that if we adopt this plan, it's simpler, hopefully it will avoid the same kind of missteps or between steps that we've had in the past, is that an accurate statement?
If you adopt this plan and this approach, yes, sir, that's correct. It's not going to unravel, you know, we can't unring the bell that's already been run, but as we go forward, it will, it will begin to level that out.
Kind of picks itself.
Are there any questions from the public? Well, seeing none, it was a pleasure of the council.
Mr. Vice President, I would, I would recommend that we accept the management report as, as presented, and that we would ask the administration to, to create an ordinance that can address the, the implementation of, of the plan.
It has been moved in second?
This is not?
It's not, it takes the public.
Is it just a?
It's just a report, it's not an agenda, so I think that any?
Can we amend the agenda to?
We have to amend the agenda to?
Let's amend the agenda first.
Okay.
It's just appropriate time to amend the agenda, though, because it's just reports that might need to be done under, under ordinances or new business. Any questions? I would recommend we wait till new business, maybe move it to the end of the agenda just to be sure.
Okay. That's my thing.
Any further questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Carolyn, for all your hard work. She works with us all during the year, just at the presentation this, we send requests to her on a weekly basis, it takes a couple of weeks, they usually have an answer back. So thank you for all your hard work during the year as well.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Manuela Castellanos? Is he here?
He's here. I haven't seen him.
All right, and we're going to move on to the mayor's report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just have two items. One is regards to sales taxes. We had a really great sales tax collection month again, $1,609. For the year, we were over budget, $1,188,000. I know a lot of people have asked me what happened to that $1,188,000. It has gone into the 2013, 2014 budget as our beginning number for sales taxes. Actually, it was about $900,000, so we have a little bit over in terms of the sales taxes. I do want to also report that the city of Hammond was awarded the Spirit Award by the Hammond Chamber of Commerce, and we have accepted that award, so we're very excited about that. And Robert Morgan is here, will start doing tall prints and all kinds of other good things for Southeastern, welcome into football season. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Okay, are there any new businesses? No new business? Okay. Can we get a motion approval of minutes?
Second.
It moved in second?
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay. Resolutions, resolutions. Seeing none, old business. Seeing none, new business. A resolution to purchase five each Chevy Tahos for the police department, state contract number 408387, $25,796 each, total purchase $128,980. Funds to come from the police millage.
Police millage. Ernest Peters. Thank you, sir. This is the request that we come to the council each year because it exceeds the $25,000 limit that mayor likes to come before the council. They are on state contract, we have a contract number there, and the total purchase price would be the $128,980, come from the police millage farm.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Would you want? I know the state contract, but we checked the, checking the deal.
We did so. We did so, and they said they could not, could not profit enough out of the 3%.
I need to ask you as well, we went through, last year, we looked at the Fords, this is your recommendation, is you open the shelves?
And just for the, in the future, would you, could that be a part of the process, now that, that we, I'm sure, I'm assuming now that we are checking with the local vendors first?
In each case, we are. It's already implemented.
Thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve that case.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item number two. A resolution to purchase Chief Duvall, a new Ford Expedition 108 package, $27,560, bid by City of Alexandria, of which we are piggybacking for the same product, not on state contract, allowable by RS 391702 and RS 391708. Mr. Peters?
Thank you. This is again, of course, police department is purchasing Chief Duvall new Ford Expedition. He's got the 108 package, which is part of the new setup, or something in the truck that not, would not be in them regularly, but the city of Alexandria bid that and got it all in, put in place, so therefore we are going to utilize their contract in purchasing the 27,560, and the revised statutes allow us to do that, 1702 and 1708, so we bring to council for approval.
I do have one question, Mr. Vice President. Just, just for the record, I just want to make sure that, that as far as the timeline, the, the, the time that new vehicles are purchased, how long, should the, should the chief have a vehicle before the chief is entitled to a new vehicle? We have met that threshold, right? That's, have you, because I understand there's like a five-year requirement before we purchase a new vehicle, because I, I got a phone call or, or a conversation regarding that, and I just want to do it as a part of the council, make sure that we're covering that, that we didn't meet the standards for when a vehicle should be replaced. And do you know what that is?
I'm not certain of what that is. I didn't know that was a, a timeline, a timeframe in there.
And I'm, I'm only bringing it up because I want to make sure that we're doing due diligence as council to, to look at that, so I just want to make sure that we are within the standard of, of the timeline for a vehicle to be replaced. And in purchasing, I would imagine that should somehow come up as a part of the requirements before we, we approve a vehicle, or we ask for a vehicle to be approved as well, so I don't know how you can find that out, Mr. Peters, in time, or at least we just have to assume that that's, that's, that has been met.
Well, we do know that the vehicle is four, four years old, we do know that.
Okay.
And at that point, when it's brought around, took the requisition in, all of, all of the requirements were met, then we started searching out for it. So as far as the timeline, I'm not certain.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I, I read the policy, they could say it's five years, so if we're within five years, then, then, you know, that's fine with me, I just want to make sure that we're, we're meeting those standards before we do that, so.
Chief, does the call stay in? Does the call stay in? Or will you stay in?
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's on public record, that we talked about.
It moved in second?
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Number three. A resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Hammond Police Department and the United States Secret Service.
Thank you, gentlemen. This is something similar to what we have with DEA, we also have the same thing with them. This would pay, they do a little bit differently, I know this is kind of hard, I think y'all may have got some of the, the information, I sent out a little bit late, but they determine how many people is involved in their task forces. They set a certain amount of money aside. That money is divided by the task forces, to the task forces. Whatever that is, that money can be used to buy equipment. And also, if we have, if they have a case that money is seized for some reason, we get a portion of that money. If there's any overtime that's directed toward any financial looking up things on the internet or stuff like that, any overtime, they will reimburse us for that overtime. So it's a win-win situation for, for the city and for the police department.
When I saw the United States Secret Service, I said, wow, what's, what's with that? But is that something common for the United States Secret Service?
It's something new for us with the Secret Service, but we've been doing it with DEA for a number of years.
Okay.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Number four. A resolution for preliminary approval for major subdivision construction of Holly Gardens Phase Two, formerly Covington Gardens Residential Subdivision, lots one through one dash forty-one, G1, G2, G3, G4, and G5, located at 1406 South Holly Street, all in accordance with survey by Dennis L. Galwin and Construction- all in accordance with survey by Dennis L. Galwin and construction plans by Colly Felon Bates. Zone R five, SDF two zero one three dash three dash two, recommend approval by planning commission, Mr. Josh Teller.
This one's a bit normal, I mean, a bit different from the norm. He is actually going to complete construction before the final plat is signed. A lot of times we get them where they bond out the construction and allows us to go straight to whatever ordinance, so right now, he is getting approval to start construction, and he can't, he has to come back for his final in the form of ordinance after construction's complete. So this is just to do construction, and they're meeting everything.
Any questions?
Second.
Move in second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Final adoptions?
Vice President, will you add to the new business section that I made at this point?
At this point?
Yes.
Final adoptions. Okay.
Can I do that? So, Mr. Vice President, I'd like to ask that we amend the agenda to allow a recommendation to accept the MAG report and to, and to ask the administration to create ordinance for implementation of the MAG report.
Second, come in. All right. Then move in second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved to amend the agenda to accept the MAG report.
Right now, we're going to do the last review of that.
Yeah?
Yeah. So, I would move that we, we accept the recommended MAG report that was presented tonight by the MAG group, and that we ask the administration to create an ordinance to implement the MAG review as presented tonight.
Second. Move in second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
All right, move on. Final adoptions of ordinance, none. Introduction of ordinance and set of public hearing. Number one, introduction of an ordinance to amend the personnel policy and procedure manual of the city of Hammond as follows. Rescind in its entirety Rule, see that's five dash five, and replace with Rule five dash five as follows. Bad weather and administrative leave. In the event an employee perceives weather conditions presents a danger for the employee to attempt to arrive at work, the employee shall communicate with the employee supervisor or department head. If the supervisor or department head concurs, the employee may be allowed to either arrive at work later than usual if conditions improve, or may be relieved from work responsibilities for the day. If an employee is allowed to take a partial or an entire day off, and said time is not otherwise completed in the same pay cycle, the employee will be charged for vacation or compensatory time. An employee who fails to report to work or to contact his or her supervisor by the beginning of his or her regular scheduled work period may constitute an unexcused absence for both disciplinary and pay purposes. For civil emergency, see Rule five dash five point one, civil emergency pay policy. And to add Rule five dash five point one, as previously approved by the Hammond City Council, as the emergency pay ordinance. And to amend Rule five dash twenty-two, sick leave in accordance with the attached revision. Loretta Severin.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Vice President, thank you. I think you did a good job of summarizing that. As you know, you've already approved the civil emergency pay policy, and the bad weather, administrative leave only deals with the employee's perception of bad weather to the employee, if he feels that the weather's too bad for him to attend, has nothing to do with the emergency pay policy. And the sick leave policy is being amended so that we are in compliance with ADA.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, so we're rescinding the current bad weather policy?
Yes.
So, so that an employee who has the perception of bad weather, there's no longer?
Yes, yes, we just, we just read it.
I thought that was what we were rescinding.
Yeah, we're rescinding the, the?
The V five?
V five.
With this new, what Councilman Martin just read, that's the, that's the replacement?
Yes.
Okay, I thought we, that's, I thought that's what we were rescinding.
No.
So that's the replacement verbiage that will now be in the policy?
Yes.
So, so one question on that, I, I just want to ask for my own benefit.
Sure.
So, if a, if an employee decides that they feel that it's a danger to come to work, and they choose not to come in, then they have to use vacation time?
Yes.
So?
Or it's during time.
So they have to use vacation time? So they, they wouldn't have the option to take time off of that pay? They would have to use their vacation time in case?
Well, the way we have it written, if they have vacation time, that's, you know, we would prefer them to use it if they're not going to be at work.
So they won't have an option in that case? There really is no option?
No, not, not as soon as possible.
So if a person has an unexcused absence, do we, for unintended purposes, then require them to have vacation time, or would that be, because that, is that kind of like contradicting one another, because an unexcused absence doesn't require vacation, right?
No, no, it doesn't.
So if this becomes an unexcused absence, then in this case, it becomes vacation? I don't know if you see, you see my point? Just curious about how that language is written on that, on that piece, I understand that whole dynamic, so if you have an unexcused absence, and you're not requiring vacation, and a person assumes, an employee decides not to come to work because of their perception of bad weather, and then you're also going to say that's an unexcused absence?
Well, it's really not an unexcuse, it's excused because he notified his supervisor stating that he will not be able to come to work either partial day or, or full day. So it, it's excused because he's unable to report to work. However, as a part of that excused absence, we request that they use vacation.
Because they want to be compensated.
Yes.
So can they use, can they use any, can we, we call it the city, the K time? K time?
Yeah, compensatory time, we have that list.
All right, okay.
Any other words?
Next, introduce.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing will be held on August twentieth, two thousand thirteen.
Okay, number two. Introduction of an ordinance to approve a rezoning request by William Lucian Jr. to rezon the south two-acre tract of the northwest quarter of southwest quarter of, southwest quarter of section eighteen from R four to RS located at fifteen hundred MC Moore Road. RZ two zero one three dash seven dash one, recommend approval by zoning commission, Josh Teller.
This property is in a proposed mobile home park area. The reason it's coming in out of the northwest, of southwest, of southwest is because she's actually going to get a, she has to get a subdivision done. She didn't want to go through the subdivision without knowing she was going to get the approval for the rezoning, so this was a really tricky situation where in our records, in our database, it shows it as R four, and we can't find anywhere where it was rezoned to R four. We can find where, when it got annexed in, it came in as RS, so it probably should be RS, but somewhere down the line, we have a date for the R four, but we can't find any record of it, so to, to just clarify and make everything legit across the board, we decided to just go through and do a rezoning, so.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing will be held on August twentieth, two thousand thirteen.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Go ahead.